Lynn Markham will be your presenter today and will be joined by Becky Roberts. Becky and Lynn are both land use specialists. Lynn, you may begin the webinar.
Okay, thank you, Morgan. So, thank you for joining us today for a role of the zoning board. Like Morgan mentioned, you can type your questions in the chat at any point, and we'll also save some time for questions at the end. So, let's get started. My first question is, what is your role related to zoning and where are you from? So, if you could use the chat box and type your answers to those, that would be great. You might be a zoning board member, an elected official on plan commission, or planning and zoning staff, clerk, administrator, or something else. So, if you would type that in, that would be great, and we're going to continue with the outline and return to the answers in a minute. So, today we'll be providing an introduction to zoning, pretty brief. We are doing zoning fundamentals as a webinar next week, Thursday. So, that's also an option where we'll go into more detail. Then, we'll talk about the role of the zoning board, what role you play related to zoning. We'll dive into variances. We'll do a brief piece on conditional uses, which zoning boards sometimes decide, and then we'll do an exercise of would you grant the variance? Becky, what do we see so far in terms of who's here?
Yeah, I'm seeing quite a bit of diversity. I'm seeing a number of clerks, planning and zoning staff, including zoning administrators, saw at least one plan commission member and a number of zoning board of adjustment or appeals members.
Okay, great. Glad to hear there's that diversity there. Okay, so I'm going to start with a summary of what we're going to go through today, and then we'll dive into the details. The first point is zoning board members act like judges. As a zoning board member, you need to be neutral and base your decisions on the evidence and the current laws as they read today. Zoning board members have different roles. They always decide on variances. They always decide on administrative appeals, and if the local ordinance assigns it, they also decide on conditional uses. Variances are a mechanism that allow a property owner to do something on their land that's prohibited by the zoning ordinance. And that's why we have some rules, some legal standards related to variances. The zoning board is only allowed to grant a variance if the applicant provides evidence that they meet all of the legal variance tests. And last, to create a legally defensible decision, the zoning board members must explain the reasons that they find that each legal test for a variance is met or not met. So, those are really our take-home points, and now we're going to use some illustrations. I also want to comment on the judge shown here in the robe. The reason that the judge looks like she does, she's wearing a blindfold because as a zoning board member, because you're to be neutral, it doesn't matter who the applicant is. It doesn't matter if you like or don't like that applicant, if you've met them or never met them. That doesn't matter, therefore the blindfold. And then, the scales are for weighing the evidence. Is the applicant meeting all of the legal standards? Have they provided evidence to show that they meet them? I want to introduce a couple of resources that are out there in case you're not familiar. One is the zoning board handbook. It's available on our website listed here. The table of contents is shown on the right. So, that's available either as a PDF. You can look at the whole thing. It's also available as a print copy. There's an order form on our website. You can order a hard copy and we'll mail it to you. Secondly, we have our online training, which includes training for plan commissions and for zoning board members. So, that leads you through the basics of zoning board as well. So, if you want to go back and review or hand it off to somebody else, that's an option as well. All right, now we're going to jump into the purpose of zoning. Most communities at this point have comprehensive plans talking about their long-term goals, and zoning is a major tool in achieving those community goals, especially the land use goals. Subdivision ordinances or land division ordinances are another major tool. Both of them can help with a number of topics. Zoning is particularly helpful with public health, safety, and welfare. That's where it came from originally, as well as protecting natural resources like water quality, forests, prairies. We'll talk about both of those topics in detail, the public health, safety, and welfare, and natural resources. It can also be used to deal with community character and aesthetics, as well as protecting both public and private investments. And again, for more on zoning, we'll have a webinar next week, Thursday, on the 13th. Zoning ordinances have two parts. They always have a map showing the various zoning districts, which uses are intended for which locations, residential, industrial, commercial, airport zoning, conservancy along the river. So, those are our different zoning districts. Within each district, there are three classes of uses. Permitted uses, those that are allowed by right in all parts of the zoning district. Conditional uses, these are uses that have to be listed in the ordinance and may be allowed if they're suited to that location. Conditional uses can be decided by the zoning board, the plan commission, or the governing body, depending on what your local ordinance says. And then, the third class is prohibited uses. These are uses that are either not listed for that district or they're listed expressly as prohibited. So, those are our three classes of uses for each zoning district. The second part of the zoning ordinance is the text. The text is usually fairly lengthy and includes a number of different topics. It starts with the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. Then, it goes into the uses allowed in each zoning district. Also, for each zoning district, it's going to include the dimensional standards, the lot sizes, width and depth, the density of development that's allowed, the various setbacks. And a zoning ordinance can also include other standards such as parking, signage, landscaping, as well as the authority and procedures, who does what related to zoning. When we apply those dimensional standards to a lot, here's what it looks like. And sometimes, this is included in a staff report for a given lot where perhaps a variance is being requested, showing the setback from the road, the setback from the side lot line, the setback from the water, and what's left is a buildable area. Some communities are getting ahead of things and requiring that when new lots are created, they have a certain size buildable area in that lot to ensure that those lots are in fact buildable. Our dimensional standards can also include floor area ratios as well as building height standards. So, what we just talked about was general zoning, the base layer of zoning. In addition, we sometimes have overlay zoning. It's usually for a special purpose, and it's an additional layer on top of general zoning. When you have different standards in general zoning and your overlay zoning, the more restrictive standard applies. The example shown here in this map is wellhead protection zoning, the WP. So, that is around municipal wells or any other community well to provide protection for those wells so that they don't end up polluted. Okay, now we'll get into the basics of what different zoning boards are called. When we look at Wisconsin state statutes, for counties and towns without village powers, we have boards of adjustment. For cities, villages, and towns with village powers, we have boards of appeal. They do the same thing. There are no legal differences between them in terms of the actions that they take. Both the board of adjustment and the board of appeal can be referred to as the zoning board or the BOA or the ZBA, zoning board of adjustment or appeals. And to point out, they're different from the zoning committee. The zoning committee is making recommendations on what the ordinance says, whereas the zoning board is applying what the ordinance says to specific fact situations. When we look at the decisions that are made by local government, they fall into three main categories. We have legislative decisions like plans and ordinances. We have quasi-judicial decisions. That's what we're going to be talking about today. And we have administrative decisions. On the left-hand side, you can see the amount of discretion or flexibility given to each of these decisions. So, the zoning board falls in the middle with quasi-judicial decisions, decisions made like a judge would, and they have limited powers defined in statute. The zoning board members will apply predetermined legal standards from local ordinances and state statute. They can apply additional conditions, and the discussion for zoning board matters occurs only during the hearing, not in public or anywhere else. One way to look at that is to compare a county board or a town board or a city council, common council, with a zoning board. So, it's the elected official's role to adopt and amend the zoning ordinance. It's the zoning board's role to act like judges and apply the ordinance as well as state laws. So, the role of the zoning board, you want to let the applicants know that the zoning board does have limited powers and is required to follow the local ordinance and state laws. As a zoning board, you can't decide whatever you think is best. It's based on whether the applicant shows that they meet the legal standards. To make legally defensible decisions, the zoning board can only approve variances when the applicant has met the legal standards. And it's only the elected officials that can change the law. The zoning board can make recommendations to the elected officials, but it's up to the elected officials to change it or not change it. Next is the zoning board announcement of proceedings. This document will be posted with the webinar. The purpose of it is it's an example of something that a zoning board chair could read at the beginning of a zoning board meeting to let the public and the applicant know what a zoning board can and can't do, what their role is. So, it says the board of adjustment or board of appeals functions like a court and must follow state laws and local zoning ordinances. The zoning board cannot change or ignore any part of the zoning ordinance or state laws, but must apply those laws as written. The zoning board may only grant a variance, a special exception or conditional use, or administrative appeal if the applicant provides evidence showing that they meet all of the legal standards for that decision. The zoning board also functions like a court, so following state statutes, case law, and the local zoning ordinance. I'll jump into what case law is in a bit. Zoning boards apply these laws to particular fact situations to make quasi-judicial decisions and have to apply the laws as they're written. Like we've mentioned, zoning board members are neutral and weigh the evidence provided by the applicant as well as other people who come to the hearing. If you want to change the ordinance, our best advice is to run for elected office. Those are the people that get to vote on whether to change the ordinance. Because zoning board decisions are like court decisions, they can be appealed to higher courts. And here's the method for that, the route for that in Wisconsin. When the zoning board makes a decision, it would first be appealed to the circuit court or county court, then to the court of appeals, and then up to the Wisconsin Supreme Court. Actually, let me go back to that. In terms of case law, so case law is court decisions, and the court decisions that set a legal precedent that provide guidance for future decisions are the decisions that come from the Wisconsin Supreme Court, as well as the published decisions that come from the court of appeals. If the zoning board follows the laws, the state statutes, and the local ordinances, as well as the case law, their decisions will generally be upheld by the courts. Having that solid legal record, explaining your reasons why you feel the legal standards are met or not met, minimizes legal costs for attorneys and also minimizes the need for the zoning board to go back and reconsider a decision if it's sent back by the courts.
Could I interrupt for one second? There's a question related to a couple of slides back. Just confirming what they had heard. They were asking about additional conditions on approval and if they need to happen during the public hearing or the public board meeting. So, I don't know if we want to distinguish between moving in and out of that specific public hearings segment?
Sure. So, the public hearing is for gathering input from the public and from the applicant. So, that section would be closed after everyone has had their opportunity to provide input. Then, the zoning board would close that portion of the meeting and go into deliberations, which is discussion and then making a decision which could include conditions. So, that comes after the public hearing. Good question. I want to touch a little bit on how towns interact with zoning boards. And it depends on whether a town has town zoning or whether they're under that shared county town zoning. In a town that has its own zoning, that has its own town zoning administrator, and the zoning ordinance was adopted by the town board, the town would have their own zoning board, typically a zoning board of appeals, and they would make variance decisions. Those variance decisions by the town zoning board would then be appealed to the circuit court. Now, alternatively, if you're a town that's under county zoning, which is really a cooperation between the county and the town, in that case, the town board or the town plan commission would make a recommendation on the variance. That would go to the county zoning board. They would make the final decision on the variance. And then, again, it could be appealed to circuit court or county court. So, that's the difference between if you're in town zoning, you have your own zoning board. If you're in county zoning, your town board or town plan commission makes a recommendation to the county zoning board that decides on variances. Okay, a little bit about open meetings law. Zoning boards are covered under open meetings law. The zoning board meetings have to be open and accessible to the public, including the disabled, and the public is provided with advance notice of meetings. Closed sessions are limited for all branches of local government. You can only go into closed session for the reasons listed in section 1985 of statute. A few of those are listed here, and really, the only one that typically applies to zoning boards is this legal consultation for current or likely litigation. When a zoning board is deciding on a variance, a conditional use, or an administrative appeal, that cannot be decided in closed session. That must be decided in open session. Once that is decided, if an applicant or a neighbor or someone else decides to appeal it to court, then there can be a closed session later on, consulting with the attorney for litigation that's going forward, but not during the original decision of the variance, conditional use, or an administrative appeal. Okay, so, what do you know? Here are the zoning board decisions. Variances, which we've talked about a little bit. Conditional uses, also called special exceptions. Those are essentially the same thing under Wisconsin law now. These are land uses allowed by conditional use. Special exception does not include variances, separate from variances. And then, administrative appeals are decisions that are made by a zoning administrator or a plan commission, and then that decision is contested and appealed to the board of adjustment or board of appeals. Okay, now we're ready to dive into variances. So, we've talked about variances allow a landowner to do something that's prohibited in the zoning ordinance. Variances are meant to provide relief in limited and unusual circumstances. They're not meant to provide general flexibility in ordinances. Again, it goes to the elected officials to decide what the ordinance says. And elected officials can revise the zoning ordinance to incorporate the level of flexibility that the community supports. That could be adjusting setbacks. That could be adjusting building heights or lot sizes. That's all up to the elected officials to decide and therefore determine the level of flexibility. So, why do zoning, why do variance decisions matter? If we think of the ordinance purposes, why do we have this ordinance? As water in a bucket, if variances are granted that don't meet the legal standards, if they're just kind of rubber stamped, it's like poking holes in the bucket, and you lose the purposes or the water. It's going to leak out, and pretty soon, you're not achieving the purposes of the ordinance. So, I have a couple of examples of that. From general zoning, our purposes shown on the bucket up here are health, safety, and welfare. In this case, when we think about roadway setbacks, the purposes for that are linked to the purposes for general zoning in general, and with a strong focus on safety. When we build structures too close to a road, it raises safety issues. The photo shown here is near where I grew up. This is Carver School Road and Highway 20. There's a stop sign right here at the corner. Both roads are 55 miles an hour speed limit. So, you would come down Carver School Road, up to the corner, stop at the stop sign, and there was this house and garage built very close to the road right away, probably within 20 feet of the road right away. So, the traffic coming from this direction was hard, if not impossible, to see from back at the stop sign. I went through that intersection many times, and a number of years after I left home and went to college, a young driver came to the stop sign, did what hundreds of us had done, pulled into the intersection so they could see, and was killed by an oncoming car. So, when we can't see, to tell if someone's coming because a structure is built very close to the road, that's a safety issue. So, granting variances can reduce the safety. Another purpose for roadway setbacks is to allow widening and to allow utility replacement. If we switch to a different type of zoning, shoreline zoning, on the left, you see what you get with shoreline zoning, and on the right, what you get without shoreline zoning or with multiple variances granted. The purposes of shoreline zoning are to prevent and control water pollution, to protect spawning grounds and aquatic life and fish, and to reserve that natural shore cover, which holds the soil in place so that we don't get water pollution, so that we don't get sedimentation on fish eggs. So, when variances are granted that don't meet the legal standards, then some of these purposes of the ordinances are lost, as shown here on the right. Okay, one more type of zoning I'll touch on, which is floodplain zoning, has different purposes again, to protect human life, to protect health, and to minimize property damage and economic losses from floods. When we grant variances to floodplain zoning, we can, again, reduce the protection of people who are living in structures and increase economic losses, as shown in some of these floods. Just a quick note that in Wisconsin, we are seeing more frequent and more intense heavy rainfalls, therefore more flooding events, which makes floodplain zoning all the more important. Okay, I'd like you to hop to the chat box again and let me know what types of variances are commonly requested in your community. Are you seeing variance requests for roadway setbacks, rear or side yard setbacks, floodplain variances, use variances, maybe shoreline variances, or something else? So, if you would go to the chat box and let me know what you're seeing in terms of common variance requests in your community, that would be helpful.
See, one response of our rear and side setbacks. Use same, use variances as well, more road, fence height, corner yards, setbacks from structures, so a lot of dimensional things here.
Yeah, okay, and one use variance I saw, setbacks in shoreline, more use variances.
So, size of structure.
Okay. Okay, this is helpful. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to jump into the two types of variances, and you've certainly hit on both of them. We'll do a little background work. So, we said variance allows a property owner to do something prohibited by the ordinance. So, what is a use variance? A use variance is authorized as the use of land for a purpose that is not allowed or is prohibited by the zoning ordinance. And use variances can present problems. One of the reasons that they can present problems is in one variance hearing, the zoning board, which is typically not elected officials, can allow a use that's prohibited by the zoning ordinance. So, if you think about in a residential area, a use variance could allow a racetrack there or a landfill there. So, it can be a large change made by a zoning board. What we recommend is that instead of doing those by use variance, those are done by rezone. Rezones are heard by the local governing body, the elected officials, like the county or town board, common council, village board. So, you can have a statement in your zoning ordinance that simply says no use variances. A number of communities have that, and it hasn't been challenged at this point. The more common type of variance, and what many of you hit on, were the area variances. So, this is a modification to dimensional or physical locational standards, such as setbacks, frontage, rear yard, side yard setbacks. It's defined in case law. Area variance or a dimensional variance provides an increment of relief, normally small, from a physical dimensional restriction. So, for all variances, the applicant has the burden of proof to show that they're meeting all of the statutory tests, the legal tests from Wisconsin statute. And those are unnecessary hardship. The hardship is due to conditions unique to the property, and there's no harm to the public interest. We're going to go through what each of those means, but these standards apply to variances from all types of zoning. These tests should be clearly listed on the variance application. So, a landowner wants to apply for a variance. They would be prompted on the application to answer how they meet each of those, what their unnecessary hardship is, what the unique conditions on their property are, and why their variance would have no harm to public interest. Okay, and we already hit on what types of variances you were seeing. So, now let's go through each of those three variance tests. We'll start with public interest. A variance that's granted cannot harm public interests. What are public interests? They're specifically the purpose and intent of the ordinance. So, it's not whatever someone might think is a public interest, but what the ordinance lists there. So, we talked about health, safety, and welfare and this situation. So, the public interest in this case is health, safety, and welfare, what's listed in the ordinance for that situation. The second test is conditions unique to the property. In this situation, we have a home setback from a road here and a road on this side as well. There's water here at the back, so there's a shoreline setback as well. What's shown here, the dark area with the blue outline, is the buildable or developable area on that lot. The property owner placed a shed where this yellow rectangle is and said that they wanted a variance to keep that shed in that location. This area is all buildable, but they set the shed outside of that. The owner argued that this property is unique because it has a steep slope, a 4% slope, because it has multiple trees. You can kind of see the outlines here. Because it has multiple trees, you can kind of see the outlines here of those trees. Um, and because it's a shoreline property, it has a shoreline. So then the question that comes to the zoning board or one of the questions. Is are these conditions unique to this property? And if they are unique, do they prevent building in a compliant location? Well, it seems pretty clear that there are multiple compliant locations here. But what about this slope, a steep slope of four percent? So the zoning administrator in their staff report. Looked into different slopes and whether they were buildable or not for this sort of structure. And they found that zero to six percent slope was considered a slight. Um, limitation and that that was fine for building. So the slope did not, um, prevent building within the developable area. Um, and having trees on your lot or having a water body next to it. Is also not unique, you know, up and down the shore, you're going to have similar situations. Um, conditions unique to the property test also includes. The focus on property rather than the applicant, the person applying. Um, we have a situation here. Where a property owner wanted to build a larger boathouse that was allowed. And their argument for that was they had a larger boat, um, that wouldn't fit in their existing boathouse. Um, the courts have said that circumstances of an applicant, such as a growing family or need for a larger garage or boathouse. Are not a factor in deciding variances, cuz those are tied to the applicant, not the property. Unnecessary hardship. Unnecessary hardship is present when compliance with the ordinance. Would either unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose of its own residential. It would prevent them from using it for residential. Or it would be unnecessarily burdensome when considering the ordinance purposes. So let's dig into a court case on that. Um, this is a case from Waukesha County. Um, we have a shoreline property, the yellow dotted lines show the setbacks for that property. You can see that this family room, which is an enclosed porch, was built encroaching on this side yard setback. And the question that eventually went all the way up to the Wisconsin Supreme Court. Was shouldn't after the fact variance be granted for this family room? Um, because removing it would be an unnecessary hardship. And the Wisconsin Supreme Court responded, no. Um, for two reasons, one, the hardship was self-created, they've built the porch without permits. And two, having a porch is no more than a personal convenience, a porch or a family room are considered. Um, not needed, not a hardship to live without, but a personal convenience. The court went on to say, growth of a family and personal inconvenience do not constitute unnecessary hardship. And it's not the uniqueness of the plight of the owner, but the uniqueness of the land, that's the criterion to decide on. If we look at other court cases about variances, here are a few high points. Um, self-created hardship, an applicant can't claim hardship. Because of conditions created by his or her own actions. A loss of profit or financial difficulty do not constitute hardship. A zoning board may consider an error of government staff when deciding whether to grant a variance. Um, just because the neighbors say, we're fine with it. That is not a reason to grant a variance, the applicant still has to show that they meet the legal standards for a variance. Um, the next bullet is similar, if neighboring properties or nearby properties have ordinance violations, things that were done illegally. That doesn't mean a variance should be granted to do the same thing. And a key point with variances and why it's not based on the property owner, but rather on the property itself, the land. Is once a variance is granted, it runs with the property to all future property owners. Okay, so when this situation went to court. The owner had a number of arguments for why they felt they should get the variance and the court responded to each of those. The owner said that not having a family room or porch was an unnecessary hardship. Because the porch had, was mostly built and it would have to be removed. The court said, that's a self-created hardship and that doesn't count as a hardship. The owner said the lot is substandard in size. The court said, the ordinance treats this lot the same as other small lots, substandard lots. The owner said the porch could not be attached to other sides of the home. The court said the porch may not be feasible at all on this property, there's no guarantee of getting a porch. The owner said they needed the porch to enjoy lake living for the family, including six children. The court said hardship is based on the property, not on the applicant. The owner said the porch would add to the value of the house. And the court said loss of profit is not a hardship. So that's just a pretty good rundown of how the courts have responded to different factors, um. Arguing for unnecessary hardship. So just a little summary, we've got these three tests that the applicant needs to meet. Um, unnecessary hardship due to conditions unique to the property and no harm to the public interest. The related piece is that deciding on variances is not horse trading. It's not if we give you this, you'll give us that. Um, instead, it's the applicant and whether they provide evidence that they meet those three tests. Um, for towns that are making recommendations to county zoning boards. Um, I recommend that you use these same three standards. When you're making your recommendations, because these are the legal tests that the county zoning board, that any zoning board needs to use. So your recommendation will be most helpful if it addresses these standards as well. Okay, and now I just wanna touch on floodplain variances. I'm not going to go into detail. But this slide, um, identifies some of the additional standards that must be met. To grant a floodplain variance, so it goes beyond those three tests. And I believe there's seven or eight more tests that have to be met. If you see floodplain zoning variances, you know, come to your zoning board. Um, or if you have one, come in the future, we have a separate decision form for floodplain variances. And I can certainly get that to you. Okay, now a little bit about conditional uses. We talked earlier about how conditional uses are this middle, um, category. Uses that are listed in the ordinance, um, for the zoning district in question. And may be allowed if they meet certain standards. So for example, in an agricultural district. You might have permitted uses of residential structures, crops, livestock barns. Conditional uses might include more industrial uses, whether it's fuel or grain. Um, this is manure digesters, sixteen of them lined up here. Um, also solar and wind farms that are under a hundred megawatts can also be covered under conditional uses. Prohibited uses might include, um, large, um, commercial or hospital or power plant. That could be some examples of prohibited uses in an agricultural district. Okay, so we have Act sixty-seven that came into place in twenty seventeen in Wisconsin. And kind of redefine the rules related to conditional uses. Um, we know that we need that class two notice in a public hearing. The ordinance has to list specific uses allowed in each district and measurable standards for deciding the application. Um, you can grant or deny a conditional use based on the applicant's ability to meet the ordinance standards. You can attach reasonable conditions that are related to the ordinance purpose. And both the local government and the applicant must provide substantial evidence supporting the decision. What is substantial evidence? It's facts, it's not opinion, um, but facts that can be backed up related to that. Um, the law also says if applicant m- meets or agrees to meet. All requirements and conditions, the local government must grant a conditional use. The applicant must provide that substantial evidence demonstrating that they meet. The requirements in the ordinance and any conditions that are added by the zoning board or whichever body decides conditional uses. Alright, let's get into decision making. Um, we'll talk about variances and conditional uses a bit. So you wanna look at the ordinance and the application forms to see what's required, whether it's a variance or a conditional use. You need a complete application to make an informed decision. Um, many ordinances will say, you know, you have to have a complete. Um, application before the public hearing can be scheduled. So that would include complete forms as well as site plans with accurate lot lines and setback measurements. If it's an incomplete application and it makes it to the hearing. The BOA can table it until they get a complete application so that they understand what's being proposed. If we look at this area and area variance decision form, the zoning ordinance purpose would be up top. And then the BOA can only grant a variance if the applicant provides evidence that they meet the three legal standards below. So we've got unnecessary hardship described here and then an opportunity for the applicant to fill out. Um, why they feel they have unnecessary hardship. And then the zoning board members are going to get a similar form. Um, to fill out whether they feel that evidence was provided, that they met that. Similarly, for hardship, um, and conditions unique to the property. The zoning staff should present their staff report containing the facts relevant to each variance test. The report may contain whether staff find each legal test is met or not met. Um, and then the zoning board members analyze and provide reasons the applicant meets or doesn't meet each variance test. Onto the next part of the decision form. Um, here we've got outlined, the BOA is only allowed to grant a variance if the applicant provides the following evidence. And then if all the variance tests are met, then that's where the zoning board can add conditions. Um, conditions that are linked to the purpose of the ordinance. Related to evidence, the burden of proof is on the applicant, whether it's a variance or a conditional use. It should be documented evidence and zoning board members have discretion in terms of how much weight they give to the stand. To statements and evidence. The decision has to be based on facts, it's not based on a popularity contest or people's opinions. Um, the source of the facts could be a professional in the re- relevant field. Or a study or report that was reviewed by professionals. Okay, what about legally, yeah?
I was gonna say, there was one quick question that you may wanna address. Uh, the question was wondering whether the zoning board or staff can require a lot survey before considering a variance request.
Yes, um, different communities handle that different. Some clearly require it in all situations. I know Door County is one of those situations. And in other communities, it's more a matter of whether they can otherwise determine. Um, where those lot lines are clearly or not. You know, sometimes you can find the markers in the ground and sometimes you can't. Um, so in some communities, it's discretionary and in others, it's required. And it's up to the local elected officials to determine whether they're going to require that or not. Yeah, good questions. Okay, so when a zoning board decision goes to the courts. This is what the courts are going to look at, the standards that they're gonna look at. Did the zoning board have legal authority to decide on the matter? If it was a variance or administrative appeal, certainly yes. Um, if it was a conditional use, it depends on what your local ordinance says. Did you follow the proper procedures related to public notice, open meeting, public hearing? And did you apply the proper standards, the three legal standards for a variance? Or the standards listed in your ordinance for a conditional use or a special exception? Were you unbiased? Could a reasonable person reach the same conclusion with the evidence that you were provided? And then is that evidence in the record? So these are the factors that you wanna look at in your own decisions to make sure that they will, um, stand up in court, they will be upheld. Okay, so we have a short, um, piece here, would you grant the variance? In this situation, um, this garage and the pad leading up to it. Were built without, um, permits. So it was a twenty-eight by thirty-foot garage. It does not comply with the roadway setback to County A. Or to the roadway setback to the side road, Horizon Lane. The area east of the house has a septic system and access issues. And the area west of the house has some underground utilities. Um, so that's the situation and the question is. Have they met the standards, you know, could you grant a variance for this? So, let's jump into it. Okay, so if you could please go to your chat box now. And answer this question, do you think the unnecessary hardship test is met? And what are your reasons that you feel it's met or not met? Why does this applicant have an unnecessary hardship or not have an unnecessary hardship? And I can go back to the, the aerial image so you can see it.
And I saw one person immediately post no, but I'm waiting to see some more answers as well as the rationale.
Sure.
And other chime, a few more time chiming in with no's.
Okay.
Um, now I'm seeing, uh, hardship is self-inflicted, wanting a garage is not a hardship. Current required setbacks are not met.
I think you're on to something.
Accessory garage is not a hardship, and yeah, now I'm starting to see some repeats. So pretty much everyone's agreeing with no, various reasons.
Okay, and I think you're on to something with your reasons as well. So we've got an existing home and a garage. So this is a secondary garage. Um, so clearly the property owner has residential use of this property. So like a number of people have said, wanting another garage, um, is not a hardship. Um, or not having another garage does not equate to a hardship. And part of it, um, you know, clearly you have an existing garage. It's up to local zoning boards to think about whether one garage, if it doesn't meet the setbacks. Um, is a hardship not having a single garage, but certainly having multiple garages. Um, people have said it's self-inflicted. Um, another way of saying that is it's probably tied to the property owner themselves, you know. And what they want to put in this garage rather than the property itself. Okay, so let's go on to the next one. Um, are unique property limitations met? Is there something unique about this property? And keep in mind, it's the land that you're considering. Um, are there, is this test met? Unique property limitations, is there something unique about this property? If you see something unique, point out, call out what you see, what makes it unique. I think one of the key pieces, um, for unique property limitations. Is related to how much space is on this property. We already said there isn't a hardship or most people agreed to that. Um, part of it is how much space do we have to work with here? We do have a few things here. Someone says it's a corner lot, I see. It could be unique based on the setbacks for a corner lot. So we do have more setbacks because it's a corner lot. However, this also isn't the only corner lot, you know, there are plenty of corner lots, um, out there. Um, when I looked up this parcel, it's listed at a little over five acres. Um, I also looked for wetlands or steep slopes that would prevent. Um, I also looked for wetlands or steep slopes that would prevent building in compliance. And I didn't see those. Um, what a property owner has already installed in terms of septic systems, wells, utilities. Those aren't the, the unique conditions of a lane, of a property. We're looking at the land itself. Someone I see just said typical for a rural setting with septic and well, yes, exactly. Um, so I'm not seeing any unique property limitations looking at this and knowing that they have you know, multiple more acres. I'm sure there are places um that could comply with setbacks. Okay, and then the third question. Um, is the no harm to public interest test met? So the purpose of the ordinance or the public interest is to promote and protect public health, morals, safety, and general welfare. So if the garage um is that close to the roads, not complying with roadway setbacks, um, would it harm public health, morals, safety, or general welfare? So that's kind of the question that we've got here and if you wanna jump in the chat um, and say whether you think um this test is met or not. I see one person said, no, it may restrict um the view. I see possibly setbacks on county roads are typically larger for visibility of side roads with higher speed limits of drivers. And that's, it is correct that different setbacks can be based on speed limits. Um, so unless these, um, the speed limits on these roads have changed since the setbacks were set, that would already be factored in. All right, so we're getting short on time and I wanna leave a little time for questions. Um, so I think in most cases, people said that one or more of the variance tests um, are not met. Um, so in that case, this variance would be denied. If you do the first test and find it's not met, you should continue on because you wanna provide all your reasons for all the tests. Um, so just keep going. Um, just a quick review, zoning board members act like judges. You must be unbiased as a zoning board member. If you are biased, you should recuse yourself. Um, the applicant has to provide evidence that they meet all the variance tests. And zoning board members have to explain their reasons. Zoning board decisions can be appealed to court. And if you follow your state laws and local zoning ordinance, um, your decisions are typically upheld. So, I will stop at that point, leave a few minutes for questions. Um, are the
Yeah, and I'd like to comment on one of the last comments made during the variance exercise. One person was asking about setting precedents, could you address that? Does granting a variance mean that you should grant all future variances that are similar?
Sure, that's a great question and the answer is no. Um, if you remember earlier when I was showing the various courts that you go up through, legal precedent is only set by Court of Appeals with um, their published decisions and by Supreme Court decisions. So BOA decisions, Board of Adjustment, Board of Appeals decisions do not set legal precedent. Now, they might set a local expectation if you grant one variance. Someone else in a similar situation might think they should be able to get the same variance. But the advice that I give to zoning boards is if you recognize that your zoning board, whether you were on it or not, you know, a number of years ago, um, made a decision that doesn't comply with your ordinance or state law, then you are not bound to make the same sort of decision. Um, you know, because you make one mistake, doesn't mean you should make a bunch more. Um, zoning boards are not bound by their past decisions.
Um, so another question is, how much discretion do zoning board members have in bal-balancing various types of public interest? Such as a community need or desire for more housing versus impact of new housing might have on neighbors?
I would say that zoning board members don't have a lot of discretion in that realm. Um, there are a number of changes that can be made to zoning ordinances um, to allow more housing and different types of housing. Um, but that's made by the elected officials with recommendations from the plan commission. That's not so much a zoning board topic. Um, and you know, what you're talking about also in terms of the impact that new housing might have on neighbors. Um, again, that goes to providing facts. It's not whether someone likes or doesn't like a new proposal for housing. It's whether that proposal for housing meets the standards in the ordinance. Um, one of the underlying principles for zoning is that it's fair and equal treatment for everyone. Um, so you wouldn't grant a variance because somebody doesn't like something somewhere. Um, if the legal standards are met, then that applicant would be treated like all other applicants under the ordinance. If they meet the variance standards, then a variance should be granted. And if they don't meet the variance standards, then it should be denied.
So one more question, if a conditional use or variance is granted, for example, on a setback or some other physical dimensional standard, uh, but the property corners were not first defined or no, no survey was done, can a decision truly be made without that survey? If so, what happens down the line if a complaint comes in? The com, sorry, if so, what happens down the line? If a complaint comes in that it doesn't meet the conditional use of variance given when a survey is conducted?
Right, right, that's a good question. Um, and that's part of the balancing act um that I was starting to get into earlier. Um, some communities require a survey in all cases. Um, and then you've got that clarity of where exactly are the lot lines and therefore how far is this setback or not? Um, there is a cost to doing those surveys. But those surveys also prevent not just people being close and like, like this person is pointing out. Um, do you really know how far back you are if you don't know exactly where the lot line is? Well, no, you don't. And we have situations in Wisconsin, um, where someone has built their shed or their fence or their whatever on a neighboring property because there was not a survey done. Um, and so not only is it not in compliance with the setback, but it's on the wrong property. Um, so it certainly can lead to um issues. But it's up to local government in terms of what they require. I would say certainly if it's close or thought to be close, a survey should be done. You know, if, if you know that this structure is fifty feet back and your setback is thirty feet, okay, then you know, chances are good that you're not, um, you're not in violation of, with that structure. So, yes.
Let me ask a related question that I've heard before since I'm not seeing anymore in the chat box. What happens if there's a mistake made by the zoning administrator in verifying a dimensional requirement, let's say the setback was measured wrong either by the staff or perhaps um, the surveyor that they may have used, how might you consider that in the variance process?
Sure, so we have a court case that does set legal precedent saying that an error by staff can be considered when granting the variance. So it doesn't say you have to grant the variance because of an error from staff, but certainly you can consider that factor when deciding whether to grant the variance or not when staff has made a mistake, which everybody makes mistakes at some point, so, yes.
And there's one last question, can an additional condition be applied if there is no comment from the public during the public hearing? Like the board commission believing in additional conditions should be added during discussion?
Can an additional condition be applied? Oh, if there's no public comment, yes. It's not dependent on whether there's public comment. It's dependent on whether the zoning board feels that condition is necessary in order to meet the purposes of the ordinance. So yes, you can add a condition that's linked to the purposes of the ordinance, even if there was no public comment on that particular topic that you're addressing with the condition. So yes, that's allowed. I thank you very much for joining us today. Um, and again, next week, Thursday will be our next webinar. Um, it will be on zoning fundamentals and we have a few more coming after that, so thanks for joining us today.